Does anybody have anything to add that the Janda?
Uh, yes, we need to add the, um, fire, fire board.
That's close enough.
Yes.
Let's put them under new business. Uh, we'll put them under number one. Any other? See, I want to amend it. Uh, we've, we've got to take Julie off the checking account, uh, so we can get our paperwork in. If we don't get it in, there's only two of us that can sign checks. So we need to get that done. So that'll go under. Uh, let's put that number three, new business. Do I have motion to accept agenda as amended?
I'll go ahead and make the most to accept amendment as agenda with the fire boards number two and Julie Williams number three.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. I'm sorry, I forgot to do the Janda, or not the Janda, but the roll call. Tim?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Thea?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Daryl?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Janet?
Here.
Howard? Not here. Dennis? Not here. Julie, unexcused absence. Okay, approval of minutes for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have motion?
I make the most approved minutes of, uh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a motion? Do we got a second?
All second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Pay bills. Do I have motion, pay bills?
Put that. No, I've already.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Michelle, clerk crazier, or not clerk crazier, just clerk.
Well, I have some things for Sandy too.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, so, and, uh, general account, there is ninety-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Place account, sixty thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Community account, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight, fifty-four. Municipal court, three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and ninety-nine cents. And enterprise account, thirty-six thousand, three, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And then, uh, I'm just passing this along for Sandy. Um, so for her to print a check for the bills, there will have to be at least two signatures on the bills, or she will not print a check for it. She wants at least two of you council members, um, to see the bills and approve them before she will print a check out for it. Um, and then, um, she would also like if we could start getting all receipts or a P O for all purchases with credit cards or charge accounts, bond cards, uh, COLOC, any charge account. Um, you guys could just bring your receipts and I'll take them to Sandy. And I think that's good.
That's it. Thank you. Janet, court.
Okay, um, let's see. Income for the court for March was one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um, we see the citations, April citations actually are up to, or I think six, seven more citations in the last couple days. Um, we've got court, two weeks from Friday on the twentieth up because next Friday is Good Friday. So we moved it. Um, there's one bench trial still scheduled and three must appear citations. Um, and I'd ask because we do have, um, some must appear, uh, things that, uh, if we could have the town hall clean before, before court, that would be great. Um, let's see, and then we have, and I know it's an email, but I don't think there've been any expenses, so we'll see. Uh, there's a COPS, a COPS grant financial report due on April twenty-ninth for the first quarter of this year.
Can we come in on the e-ticket system? Have we heard anything?
Daryl's, uh, talking about that.
Ready?
Ready. I don't know, you don't want to be ready.
No. Um, e-tickets. No, we're, we're doing okay. We just had another meeting with them today. We are making a little progress. I believe we have most of our offenses in there. They're working on some other stuff. We have another meeting for them planned with them on Friday. To see what we have to finish up. We're going to mainly concentrate on the backend stuff, um, with Janet. But we are starting to make some progress. Um, at least it's not dead in the water like Finn. So we'll just let you know how it goes after Friday. I don't believe it's going to be starting this week or next week, so, I mean, there's still.
What's your issue with it?
Um, we, the gentleman, we're dealing with, what's his name?
Jordan.
Jordan doesn't really understand. He's pretty much the salesperson for the thing. And so he has to be, get ahold of his guys who put it all in the computers and stuff, and they're having trouble connecting up. But we pretty much let them know we have to have this done immediately.
Weren't we supposed to have it done, uh, by spring, early spring?
Yeah, yes, yes. We just made that very clear to them. We made it, Janet made it very clear today. That this is unacceptable, but, I mean, we can only do it so far. I mean, we're just kind of waiting for them to get us into the computers.
Hey, we can wait and hold their check for a few.
I don't think we've sent them any money.
Actually, I know. So there's, there is one, there's one invoice that I, that I already gave to Michelle, and I think we're holding that one. And then there's another one that I know that I have not passed along.
Did we send, did, is that invoice in here now, Michelle?
It was put on my desk and it's.
Is it still on your desk?
No, I said it was put on my desk and isn't it?
Yeah, we're supposed to be holding that one until, because they kind of got us a little pered right now.
So here's the issue, they haven't finished the training yet because the backend isn't done. They were supposed to do the training for the guys on how to use the, their part of the system. And then part of that training was supposed to be for me on how to use the backend. So how to download the, the citation information and all of that. And that didn't happen because the backend wasn't finished at that time. And because things have just been dragging out, um, so that one, there is one invoice that we have from them that I've just held on to and have not passed along to Michelle. And then there's another one that she, that she has, it might be in this batch of bills.
Who was it from?
Tyler Technology.
Oh, I think that was last month though.
Oh.
I think that was last month.
I know, that was done.
So, but we are making progress. We did get some more of the offenses downloaded. It's just a mess because we can't find them. So it's all technical computer stuff that we can't do from here and we're waiting for them to finish up. That's all, and that's just what we know. Hopefully we'll find out more on Friday.
Okay. Just well finish his report while he's up. Josh, or Daryl?
Yeah. Oh, the only other thing we have is, um, Madison PD, highly cleaned up. Be set for May fifteenth, so hopefully people can show up. I'll remind you again, next meeting, I think it's before the fifteenth, so love donuts and stuff. Do a cleanup, trash pickup if we can in the mornings.
Is that a cops thing, the donuts?
Yeah, sold out the cops. And if you don't want any, we can, I'll have more, so it's fine. So that's all, that's all we have right now, so, okay?
Okay, and Daryl informed me that Josh's car is getting fixed. Uh, they're going to weld a piece of expanded metal on both cars so the birds can't get in there and run the grill. And I gave him permission just to go ahead and get it fixed. It's got to be done, so.
Yeah.
Maintenance, Tim, you want to take that?
Yeah, I can, I can cover that. Uh, of course, everybody knows Howard's been doing his thing for twelve hours a week to get everything done during the winter and keep things running and all that. I'm having surgery on Friday on my neck. I will probably be out for a week and then I'll be, uh, Howard and I will be starting up. We've got a lot of things that's got to be done. Looks like we're going to get an early spring, maybe, so, you know, we've got to get pumps changed. We've got to get a lot of things done before we're ready to go ahead and get everything started for the, for the spring and the summer, which we will get started before the first of May. You know, we talked a little bit last meeting about what the cost of, uh, a backhoe attachment would be for that tractor. And I'll tell you, I've been putting some numbers on it. It's like Howard said, you know, we can, we can go ahead and use Rattlesnake, whoever we're going to use for the, the issues that we've got, the small issues that we can take care of ourselves. And go ahead and get a box of donuts, uh, at the end of the year from whoever we're using for, thank you for using them. But right now with the six septic tanks that we've got to, we've got to dig up, we've got to realign filters, and we've got to put the bigger, uh, covers on those. We're probably looking at four to six thousand just in that right there alone. We've got a water line leak on, uh, Second Street in front of Howard's. It's got to be replaced, or fixed. You know, we're probably looking at another thousand there, so, you know, we're, we're looking at about nine grand is what we're looking at for a backhoe attachment for that. And we talked about the one that was used over here at the post office. And that was just a little bitty fifteen horsepower tractor with a little bitty backhoe on it. They dug through that frost like it was butter with that thing. But we can either, we can either go ahead and, you know, throughout the year, pay, you know, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars annually on the little backhoe stuff that we've got to do, or we can purchase one of those, uh, attachments for that tractor for under ten, which to me makes a lot of sense for the simple reasons we're going to spend that money anyway. So it's not whether, uh, we've, we've got the money, it's going to have to be spent, period. So, you know, we're, I mean, my books, I think it's going to pay for itself in the first summers if we go ahead and we, we think about getting that and get her done before spring comes and all this work starts. You know, things like the park, we can't open the park up until we get that septic tank fixed because the, the filters won't align anymore. They won't go down in there. So we can't be using the septic tanks without those filters in there. Those, those septic tanks are going to flow over and then we're going to have all kinds of problems. So, you know, in, in the way I see it, uh, you know, and this is just, just my vision is, is, uh, we've got the money to go ahead and get it done, uh, from our community fund, which is something that we can use that money for because that's going to be part of the utilization of whatever we're doing. So, you know, I just want to bring that to the council. I'm not saying that we've got to do it or we need to do it. I just want everybody to be aware of the costs that are coming up. We're going to incur through backhoe charges. Every time we've got a backhoe down here, you're looking at about a thousand bucks, guys. That's including travel time, man hours, tools, and that depends on, on what we're doing and how long it takes. But you're looking at a minimum of about a thousand bucks per trip each time we have a backhoe in town. So it's something to kick around and think about. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up. But other than that, uh, Howard told me this morning that everything's been going fine. There's really nothing to report. Oh, there's something else I wanted to bring up. I've been loading gravel out of the Keans pit up at Heightville, and they've got a bunch of pit run up there. And I talked to Philip Keens. You all know we've got issues on First Street over here. It's probably our roughest street in town, and there's a couple other places. But, uh, they will get us the gravel, or the, uh, road base for six dollars per ton, which he's given us an incredible break on that. It's usually way more net, but it's because it's a town of Manderson, we're getting the break on it. The only thing I would need to find out is what trucking costs are going to cost. And BTC has left two trucks, local trucks, to, to, because they got work here to do. But when I find out that cost, if you guys want to go ahead and get First Street taken care of this year and start working on some other streets as we need it next year and the following year. But First Street's in really bad shape. Have any, has anybody been down it? I guess not.
Judy.
Oh, Judy.
Are you going to be able to, I mean, are you going to do the whole job this year? Will you still be able to get pit run next year?
Yeah, we can still get pit run. They got, yeah, they got a lot of pit run up there.
Oh, okay. So they're going to be still working up there then?
Yeah. So anyhow, that's all I got for maintenance, guys. I don't know if there's any comments or suggestions or anything. I'd be glad to hear anything that's going on or things that I missed that need to be done.
I think if we could get a list of, like, a, like a, like a written out list of how much things are, or estimate of how much things are going to cost.
Right.
And then we can get our budget for the year started because we're not legally supposed to spend money until we have a budget. Nothing off the budget is supposed to be spent, and that's state.
Have you looked at last year's budget and see what we've got left?
I have not received last year's budget. No one has it, so, um.
Julie's going to have the budget. County's going to have the budget.
I, no one has sent it to me, so I have nothing to go off of.
Okay.
But we do need this year's budget done. Pretty, pretty soon. When is it? June, April, or end of April?
End of June.
End of June. Okay, okay. Well, then we've got a little bit of time, so, but we, probably the sooner the better because of the whole bunch of stuff that we need to do.
Absolutely.
We want to make sure that everything gets done.
You got, I agree with that.
So I think, uh, just like a list of everything, estimates, or what you know the price will be. That way we all can, like, visualize and really see it real good.
Absolutely.
Make sure everything that needs to be done gets done.
I agree. Just bringing everything to everybody's attention.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to have to get a backhoe in here next month because we can't let these, this stuff go.
Well, yes.
Yeah. So just letting you know that it's got to be done. Okay, moving on. Uh, Thea, ordinance.
Okay, this is your, uh, okay, yes, um, so last month I mentioned, uh, everybody handed you, so it's got investment proposals at the top of it. Uh, last month I mentioned working with Civic Plus to get our ordinances done because what we have is not either complete or it's not the actual version anymore since that was, the original walked away. Um, and so I do have, I gave, I have that printed out, so everyone should have a copy. Uh, give the rundown of how much, um, they would charge for us, for them to go through them. Uh, make sure all of them line up with biomy statutes that make sense and are relevant. Uh, they'll go through and renumber, make sure everything is, everything makes, makes sense. And then they'll go through and recodify everything, um, since it's been a minute. Um, and American Legal Publishing was bought by, or Sterling, whom I was told last month is who codified our ordinance originally. They were bought by American Legal Publishing in two thousand and nineteen, who also was, um, like a sub of, of their corporation. So there's no records of Manderson with American Legal Publishing because of that, I assume. Um, so what we're looking at to get the ordinance that we have currently, looked at, gone through by lawyers, cross-referenced with one week state statutes to make sure that everything lines up, they don't conflict or anything crazy. Um, would be twelve hundred dollars for the one-time deal. And then they do off, um, offer a, um, supplementation and online code hosting, which with online code hosting, they would post it online. Warland uses them. Uh, they post it online and maintain it for us online so everybody can see it. It's really nice and organized. That itself, just for the online coding, is, um, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then supplementation, they would basically be on retainer so that if we have a new, uh, ordinance we want to send, we just send it to them and they codify it and they send it to us ready to put into our book. That is thirteen hundred dollars. So for the annual renewal and everything total with them going through and re-publicizing it, updating our codes, online bundle and supplementation, that's thirty-six, uh, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars a year if we have them on retainer. If not, if we just had them look at our books, fix the ordinances, make them nice, make them make sense, it's only twelve hundred dollars. And I do have a bigger packet that does explain kind of all that. If anybody will look at it, it's just fifteen pages and I don't have ink to print all of them off. But if anybody's interested, I do have it for y'all to check out, so.
Yeah, I'll tell you, you know, I was, I've been spending a lot of time in this ordinance book lately. And, you know, when we started this ordinance book, I was mayor then, and then, of course, I, I, I didn't, uh, wasn't elected the next term, so was finished other than wherever. But I've got that one here, but I'm, I'm going through, you know, Dennis said that they got that last one codified, if I heard him right. Is that correct?
That's what he said.
But I'm going through, and if I've got to write book, there's nothing been codified on this book because to put it into law, we've got to have a reading on it to go ahead and pass this read. And I don't find anywhere in this budget book to where it was codified. Uh, there's, there's no dates on it.
And I believe that's what, um, the lawyer side of the ministry are with Civic Plus. I do believe that's what he meant by ours looks like a proof. It's not the final version.
Well, this, this is the proof that was started in this book here. But then I went back to the ordinance book prior to this one getting started. And of course, it's got, uh, the readings and the signatures and everything on it. But I can't find any of our code books, uh, that we've got that show that anything's ever been codified and taken care of. So Dennis said we spent thirteen grand on it.
Which is wild, by the way.
Yeah, it's, it's wild because I remember when we was doing it, it was like thirty-three hundred bucks for the whole thing.
That's crazy, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that this is something that we've got, uh, you know, I'll tell you what, in this one, if this is a codified version or the, the supposed to be codified version, there is so much stuff left out of this that was in, uh, I mean, I go through a lot of different things, and, and there's nothing in here about what was in the old ordinance book compared to this book that was supposed to be the new one.
Yeah, the one that, I think the, the new one is the one that anyone has access to. That's the one that got sent out and nobody asked for it. And it, I mean, it's, it's weird. There's some things in there that was the reason I was concerned because there's parts that's like, anything that, anybody who had horses passed this date, but it just said date instead of like an actual date. So that was kind of weird, and that's why I was concerned. And then, of course, when you talk to anybody and they have concerns about like, oh, there's an ordinance for this, but it's not here, you know, it's, it makes it difficult. And that's, that's one thing that I think is really, really important that we tackle.
Yeah, this is, this is ridiculous.
Our ordinance makes sense.
According to this ordinance, both the homeowner is responsible for something, their septic tank.
It is.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a goofed up deal, uh.
And it's really hard to, for us to enforce an ordinance book that isn't correct, complete, or makes sense.
Yeah. You know, I can see, and thank you for doing this, Thea, but, uh, you know, I can see us doing the one-time deal and getting everything together, but I, I can't foresee us being able to afford thirty.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred a year. I mean, you know. That would be nice, if we could.
Right. My apologies, I'm getting over, whatever was floating around. Um, but yeah, the main thing though is really just that twelve hundred to get everything looked through by lawyers and done properly. And it's just twelve hundred, it's not thirty-two thousand or some crazy one, so.
Right.
That's, that's going to take a lot of time. We're going to have to go through it.
Right.
Each ordinance.
Section of the same.
Well, they, I sent them this copy that I have. They've already looked through it, and that's the number they have for this. So if we had anything extra or else that was missing out of it, um, if I could get a copy of it, I could send it to him and then we could work that out. Because whatever isn't in here, I don't have, so I can't send it.
You know, and I've got some of the old stuff from years ago, but, uh, whenever, whenever it was redone to have it codified, a lot of that stuff was left out of it because there's stuff in here that is, that we don't even have. It's not there, period.
But then I'll go back to you, Karen, something that I mentioned, I think, last month also is, um, a little committee of people somebody to go, just to work through the ordinances and see what's in it.
Right.
See what makes sense, see what doesn't make sense. That way we have a little bit more of a summarized version of what do we need to do to fix it, and then, you know.
Yeah.
So, um, so this isn't like a proposal to do it like today, but it's kind of to give everybody some numbers, you know. And he said, he didn't know that this price will not change, um, because I told him it could be a year or more.
Right.
And he said that they rarely raise their prices very much. It won't change much from this, so.
So it's like when we, when we started in two thousand, I believe it was nineteen, of redoing the ordinance book, you know, we got a, a lot of, uh, you know, we, we called basin and they give us their ordinance. We looked at Gravels, we looked at Tentsleeps, you know, because their towns are not the same size, but of the same type of, you know, whatever. And everywhere we had a lot of things from those, those three towns. But I think it might not hurt to get into even some of the smaller towns like Franny and Beaver and look at their ordinance books and see what they've got. And, you know, because we can pull a lot out of them. And, you know, those towns, a lot of those towns have had attorneys to help them do theirs. We have not had attorneys to help us do ours or accounting or anything else, so.
Yeah.
So, yes, I think it's a must tonight. You know, I think that we ought to, you know, put three or four of us together twice a month or something and start going through this section by section and getting her done.
And if there's any town that would be interested in helping with that, that would be, volunteers, great. Because more eyes, the better to help.
Amen. I agree.
Yes, yes, that is it.
Uh, ordinance amendment dogs at large, they're great.
Yes, um, I did print out just that, the ordinance amendment with the added a little bit about adding any other daily fees. The ordinance was good, except the last one we mentioned, we wanted to add, um, all fines, our addition to any impoundment, veterinarian, and any other daily fees because the contract that, we actually have a copy of it at school, um, does also have a daily fee to it. So we want to make sure this is as precise as possible.
And you got that in there.
I actually did, yeah.
Good.
Because the only thing I think is the, oh, one, but this is, and it's just a, it's just like a few words at the end of it, but that's. We got it, right? And I did print out a bunch of extras if anybody wanted to check them out.
And then the, the, uh, contract with the town of Grable is also in his, uh, whatever it says.
We had horses at large today, and we have fines for those at large. Because I have them let grow.
I would have enjoyed that.
Many rode you, all right.
Yeah, Trump ran it about smack to didn't enjoy it. I think it was, it was like, we would have blamed you.
Where were they at?
They were coming out of Matt Lynch's driveway onto the main street, and they come across the deal there and got into Dennis's yard.
Them horses, you know, how? Okay, uh, has everybody had a chance to look at the ordinance?
Um, yes.
Do I have the motion to accept ordinance four dash one B dash eight?
For the third reading, I'll certainly have that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, on the, the contract with Grable, uh, do we need to pass that separate or is that combined with the ordinance?
I have a question about the contract, I don't know if you mentioned it.
Yes.
Um, it does say that there's a max of three days to hold them.
Yes.
After that three days, what happens?
To towns, I mean, it's our decision, usually go to a town, put to sleep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
By another platform. Okay, we'll only hold it for three days and we have to, the town likes to pick it up. Either take it to vet and have it euthanized or unless you find other arrangements.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure who I knew was going.
So do I have the motion to accept the contract with the town of Grable?
Sub move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Brent, your hub.
I'm a sweet. Well, Mr. Mayor, Fire District Three was supposed to be here to discuss what's going on. So, I'm the messenger boy.
Don't shoot the messenger.
That's right. They're still having issues with not getting their fire hydrants, whether they're tested or not. They decided that I needed to give you guys a copy of how Basin logs them and takes care of it on maintenance end of it. And their district board, which is Vaughn and Palmer and Boss, are saying that if they don't get their hydrant tests so that they can see what the flows are, what there is, that they're talking about pulling fire again.
She, she sent the stuff they wanted, what they did with it, I have no idea.
They're saying they never, the one they said they got a foot drive or thrive, they didn't, they couldn't open in any form, so I don't, you know, that's between you and them.
We're reading, we, 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 we're testing again in May, so we test in May and we test in October.
Okay.
But you, you sent that to me, so, you know, and we talked about it last time they were here, so I don't know why.
Well, I don't either, but they, they talked to my board and that's why I'm here, because my board is worried that us coming down here on structural fires, if the water isn't capable of handling what we're doing, like we had that little pool bar down there.
Did you, did you get the explanation on that, Brent?
No, I did not get the explanation on that.
Can I give it to you?
Huh?
Can I give that explanation?
Yeah, you, that, I, that's why I called you out to fence it.
Amen, yeah, when we pulled up, uh, I was the first one there to that fire. And I was helping get furniture and stuff out of there. Then the tanker showed up, tanker showed up, full of water, ready to fight fire. Then they're taking and they're hunting for an inch and a half hose to go off the truck to the fire. Well, why they was doing that, I don't know, but in the meantime, they hit the wrong switch and emptied that truck. So you had twenty-four hundred gallons of water on the ground, and so when you've got a major fire and you've got three trucks pumping off that one, and you're trying to fill that truck as you're pumping off them, that's why they did not have the pressure to do that. It was not the hydrants fault, that hydrants got plenty of pressure.
My only concern was, is that hydrant fed off of the main line that comes in from the rural district? Or is it being fed, gravity fed from the tank on top of the hill?
Gravity fed from the tank off the adage line.
Well, and that's the other thing, if the fire closed, um, anybody's talked about ISO, if they even have ISO. But if there's ISO, the insurance rates in this town are based off of every ISO rating that Manners gets or has.
Exactly.
Which I would imagine right now, they're setting at a nine.
Yeah, and I don't know that.
And I don't, I haven't ever seen their ISO.
Yeah.
I'm setting at a four and Basin.
Right.
Graves is, or Worland's a three.
I know every hydrant that we tested last year, and we tested twice last year, uh, our gallons per minute orbit, is it per minute, I believe it's per minute, isn't it? Uh, was between five ninety-nine and nine hundred. And our static on most of those, I believe, was within, in the sixty pound range. So according to Coker, everything was kosher with all those hydrants when they were tested.
See, he's never said a word from you, but I tell you, we ever talked and did him about.
Yeah, he was-
And me and him talked pretty frequently on it.
Yeah, he was here at that meeting.
But, you know, here there, I brought what NFPA, which is what standard runs the ISO and everything, the exact, how it's supposed to be done, how it works,
Okay.
and all that. And other than that, if you guys got any questions of me, but-
I've got a couple of them, Brent, uh, just off the top of my head. Is Manners a standalone department or is Basin the head of the Manners department?
No, Manners is by itself.
Okay.
We have a automatic, mutuate with Manners, is all we've got.
Then, you know, here's a question, it's just a question, I'm thinking, you know, number one is, we found out when they, uh, cut us from fire protection, that it wasn't, they did not cut us from fire protection, they can't, because that's a mill levy that comes from the taxpayers.
Uh, does this town collect the mill levy and turn it over to the fire district? Because my understanding, when we started the fire district, Manners couldn't afford the mill levies and never joined the fire district that way.
No.
With Basin, we get three mill levies from the town of Basin.
Yeah, we do too.
That's three quarters of courthouse.
So, and then how much is the three mills generating? Because if you're only paying Manners seventeen hundred bucks or fifty,
Twenty-eight hundred.
Even twenty-eight hundred, is that the total three mills or?
That's what, what the courthouse gave maybe, and they say Manners, you like Manners, it's very poor town.
Well, there ain't no doubt about that.
So, you know, twenty-eight hundred is probably a little bit more right now than three mil.
It's gonna get less too.
So, so another question I got is, uh, you know, and this just comes right down to the brass tacks of it, Brent. I'm not getting upset with anybody or putting the blame on anybody or anything else, but we've had five sirens in the last week and we've had nobody show up to any of them.
That's bull.
Well.
My fire department's answered every one of them.
Oh, I'm talking about from this department.
Uh, it don't matter what they, that's why we've gotten, you know, mutated with them and it's automatic, is they've got, what, five guys in town now supposedly?
Right.
One of them works at Georgia Pacific, one of them's working in Worland part of the time and working up at the cafe part of the time, and the other one's running around selling.
Whatever.
Whatever, but that's what our district is doing to protect the people in the town of Manners.
So, so anytime we've got, let's say, a house call, Basin's definitely-
We're, Basin and Worland are coming for all structure fires.
Good, good, good.
I can tell you that right now, because Chief Coker and I have decided that the town of Manners is just like having a rural fire. We're gonna bring enough resources and enough water that we can handle it in the initial phase.
Right.
Whether it's offense or defense. So, yeah.
Well, and I guess, you know, and I understand the concern about the fire hydrants and, and they were testing, I don't know what's happened with the reports that were supposed to have been sent, which is, make mute point, because they're gonna be tested again.
Yeah, well, and if you fill out a form like that with the pressures, the attic and all of it, so I guess-
I guess, I guess, the other thing is, is when we fight, and Brent and I've been on the fire department for many years, and the one that was here for the town, the town had their own for many years, but, uh, you know, when we fight fires in the country, we don't have fire hydrants, so what is the big issue with the hydrants all of a sudden?
These people's tax dollars.
The tax dollars.
Their insurance rates is what that is.
Okay.
That's why the district's in such a tiff over it. These folks are all getting screwed if those hydrants aren't putting out the water they should be and they doing ISO on it. And you've got to have three or four years of ISO, of readings in a row to give the ISO. And then they're gonna go around and check hydrants on different types of town.
And that's why Coker told us when we first started that, and we bought that machine to do the testing with, and she said, you're gonna have to do this twice a year, Tim, for three years.
Well, yeah, to get it copped back up.
Absolutely.
Because we only test once a year.
Yeah.
Town tests everything, but we've got over a hundred and some hydrants. And Manners got twelve, maybe?
Seventeen.
Because I only counted eleven tonight.
Yeah, there's-
And I didn't tip by the bar or the weapons, there's one in the evening or another, so.
And both fire hydrant, or the-
I've been down all of them.
Yeah, because I think there was seventeen, fifteen or seventeen is what there is total. And so you're missing a couple.
But that, you know, the insurance rates and, I mean, insurance companies find out that the hydrants or whatever in town, which is the town, the municipal, the infrastructure.
Right.
They'll drop.
So let me ask you this question. Uh, it is question and answer session, because you're here, but, uh, let's say, which is not a fact, because they all tested static above sixty.
I hope they did.
They all tested high ninety-nine to nine ninety-nine. So, let's say, for example, that we have one that goes, let's just use the number thirty.
Then you need to figure out, and NFPA, there's a color code for every fire hydrant that won't meet
Right.
the flow test.
Yep.
So if that's the case, whatever color they say it is, you need to paint that hydrant that color so that we know not to hook onto it, or that we're gonna have to lay in from somebody else that's got the water as well.
Yeah, isn't it a, isn't it a, the, the different colors go on the top of them and what it is is the, the-
Most, most places it's painted the whole things.
Because I know Worland's got green on some and red on some and blue on some, and, and we've got all those codes with that. We, we were able to keep all ours red because they were all within that range, so. But yeah, just tell them that we'll get that to them, higher and I'll be retesting those the first couple of weeks of May. And that will be done, and why they're not getting them, I don't know, but they will definitely get them this time.
Well, if you need help doing stuff, let me know.
I'll let you know, absolutely.
Because it doesn't take ten minutes to drive down here.
Absolutely.
So.
We appreciate that, Brent.
But I can tell you right now, our fire district is not gonna leave Manners hanging out naked.
Super.
So regardless, you know, but the deal of it is, your agreement with the town is with District Three.
Okay.
So they're the player you gotta pass the light.
Deal with.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Maybe I better read here, mark that sixty thousand dollar grant I'm going for for hydrants.
Well, the deal of it is, is the hydrants are working and we can get on them and we can open them and get the caps off of them. That would be fine. But it's like Tim said, the fact that we had to string our two and a half off of wiretrep back to the hydrant down there, and then I had to holler you two to get the main valve open to get enough pressure to do what we needed.
Yeah.
Because if we could have used a deck gun that night without worrying about sucking that hydrant out of the ground.
Exactly.
It would have made a big difference.
Well, and we had John Joyce opening up the water tank into town, he had it wide open going in for the tanks, that's why we were staying in cover.
Staying ahead of it, yeah. Because we were sucking that down, I mean.
Yeah, so let me check, it was about half full on that one time or something.
Yeah.
No, there was a lot of water using the fire, so.
We pumped a lot of water.
A bunch. Anyhow, that's all I had, has anybody got anything else for Brent? Judy?
I understand what you're talking about, all the fire hydrants and stuff. Um, how many on our fire department live here in town, um, and that are local, I understand some have jobs? But it seems like when our sirens go off, nobody answers them hardly anymore.
Well, you've got Butcher that's here, you've got Alita over there, and Barb moved out on the hill somewhere, and then you're on it, and your husband are now on it.
Which we live next to, um, Butcher.
So, it sounds like four.
Are any of them qualified?
Butcher is, or they're near.
Me and Chris are-
Barb was a firefighter once, a long time ago.
And Chris and I are new to this, to, um, the department, um, starting in December, so I will be going to Cody Fire School.
And for weekend in May?
Yes, May, I was supposed to say May.
But I also know Barb can leave the cafe if there's a fire, I would think, because I see in Worland, there's-
Well, that depends on her bosses. Because I've got firemen that used to be able to leave in Basin, but now they can't leave because their bosses are saying, hey, I'm losing money if you're gone and I ain't gonna lose money.
Okay, because I know in Worland, I know one that works with my son and that there's a fire, he's gone. But I'm just asking,
That's how it used to be.
Um, you know, because I have seen some around that didn't answer the calls that were in town, and that's what I sometimes wonder.
Between them and them.
And with me and Chris being new and not being trained, we cannot call, answer without somebody who is trained first. Once we can get our training, then we can, but right now, we're not allowed to do that.
Well, and to add on to that, if you're not getting the training you need to drive or pump one of them trucks, let me know.
I don't think they have the training to work as, like they-
Anything else?
Chris is on the department before, so he's been there for fifteen months.
I think we bit this dog in a-
Let him talk.
Let's move on. Uh, Thea, town cleanup.
All right, so this is not about the road cleanup, this is different. Um, so I was asked about getting, um, dumpsters, do town cleanup, that, you know, would be really helpful. And I know we got, I don't know, I think we got, uh, three last year in this fall. They were here for like, um, a day.
Two days.
Two days. Um, so I wanted to see what we were thinking about getting, using like that in May or June for the town.
You know, here's my theory on it, Thea, is we've done it for like three or four years straight now, and we've done it, last year we done it once, generally, we've done it spring and fall. But it's getting awfully expensive anymore, that cost us about two grand every time we bring those dumpsters in.
Per dumpster or just?
Total.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, and then what we find out is, is I don't know if anybody's noticed that's used them, there's very few people in town that use them, it's mainly the same people every year. And what happens is they get overfull and then they start overflowing. Then we get charged extra, because then they gotta bring another dumpster in to pick up the overflow. So, you know, I'm all for town cleanup, and I have been ever since we started doing it, but, uh, you know, you talk about the budget, I, I think maybe we ought to shoot for a fall cleanup and see where our budget's at instead of, uh, doing a spring cleanup.
And I think that would be something the community's going to be used for.
Right.
So if we could budget for it, that would be
Yeah.
extra great. Um, yeah.
That's just my personal opinion, I mean, I, I, what's the townspeople think, I mean?
Because, um, I did call Road Runner today.
Right.
Um, they do thirty-foot roll-offs for five hundred dollars plus dump and landfill fees, which she said for a bigger project would be about two fifty, um, and then it's five dollars a day for the dumpster itself. Which, y'all know that, but that's for them. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with how much that costs for Road Runner. Um, I, oops, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to get up with anybody else, like Kiel, Sedation, um, currently, uh, my schedule is wonky and doesn't align super awesome. Uh, my schedule is wonky and does it online, it's super awesome.
Right.
But, um, yeah, I can still call around and see if there's anybody just.
So, I was pretty close, I said about two grand, that's twenty-one hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Right.
But look how much everything got put in that dumpsters, so I mean, it helped with that.
And it really wasn't advertised super great last year either, so like, most people didn't even know it was there until the last day and it was already full.
Yeah, and there's one other thing that you, if you watch it, you see, we've got out of towners bringing stuff in to use those too, so.
Go ahead.
I feel that it should be in the spring because I'm more apt to do it. Once winter's over, um, I'm doing more cleaning then than I do in the fall. And I feel we should have at least one time, maybe not two. But yeah, they're used and it's not fair that you get out of towners coming in here, but how do you, I mean, if you see them, I'll get you trying to stop them, but um, I feel it does help.
I agree, and I do think of, of maybe a late spring, if we can swing it and see better, because, I mean, it is warmer and there's a lot of people prefer to be out when it's warm, less so when it's cold.
Well, and if we do it, you know, and I guess I'm just peeling about some of this stuff, you know, I open the back door and I start loading it from the front and bring everything back when I put stuff in there. But you got people to just throw it over the top and they miss and it ends up on the side and then you've got the back full and the front full and nobody crawls up there to look in and middle's empty and uh, you know. But anyway, I'm for town cleanup, I mean, I'm not against today, I'm one hundred percent for it. So, if we want to select a date, I would vote to go ahead and do it once in the spring and.
I think it'd be good to maybe revisit once we've done our budget. And that way we can make sure that we're able to do it, because if we can get our budget done early enough, you know, we'll know about what more we can do and that way they can get done before it gets.
And you talked to Sandy Rod about when she started on that budget?
Uh, she said she was gonna get to it right now.
Okay.
But if there, if it's gonna be a lot of work and it's gonna take a lot of time because she don't have nothing to go by.
Right.
Budget's never been done right and it's gonna be a mess.
All right. Let's, let's revisit that next meeting on spring cleanup, ladies and gentlemen.
Go and put that on next month's agenda. Okay, we've got to sign or we've gotta fill out the signature cards again. We were hoping Julie would be here so we could do it, she's not going to be. Uh, to get you guys on the signature card, we're going to have to omit Julie and put the rest of us on. Otherwise, there's just me and Tim and Michelle that can sign checks.
A lot of times I can't find these too.
So, we.
I hope it's gonna work.
I am working.
We need to get them, them filled out, but the only way we can do it is by eliminating Julie.
Is this temporary or?
If, if, it's temporary, yes, but I don't wanna have to redo the, the signature cards in three months when she gets back. We should only have to do them once a year. So, uh, yes, it is temporary, we'll get her on, but I can't guarantee that it'll be the second that she gets back if she gets back.
Does anybody know if she's moving back to Manderson or has anybody heard?
Um, I haven't heard. I've talked to her twice.
Yeah.
And they're trying to put her in rehab up there.
Yeah, neither.
For to do some stuff and then they're hoping that if she does real well, that she'll be able to do rehab closer to home and then go from there.
But as far as we know, she, she's not a resident of the town of Manderson right now because.
Um.
I don't think.
But I, I did talk to county attorney today and then they referred me to another one. Um, beans, they're still legally married. Wyoming is equal state and so where Mike has a house over there and they're still married, it will still be a.
Residence.
Mm-huh.
Is this appropriate to talk there in open meeting?
I don't know, I think enough said right here.
That's, that's in more personal than.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Thea.
Okay, I need a motion. Or not a motion.
I need a motion to remove Julie from the bank. Signature list, we're only, so we know more.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, everybody needs to sign that, make sure you sign it every place, usually, we gotta bring it back three or four times and.
I think the only one that's left is Tim. Right, you signed it?
I signed it.
I'll sign it tomorrow.
Come in tomorrow. Ask the name, ask the bills.
She wouldn't have to work so hard trying to find you.
All right, I'll tell you what.
Public comments.
You're probably getting tired of me. I have a, yes, a couple of them, um, how are we doing on the dog tags?
Um, so, I think it's about my record, um, la, was it last week we did the rabies clinic?
Yes.
I think maybe a handful of people showed up and only, I only probably sold three tags out of all that handful.
And then another thing, uh, when the water bills go out, I haven't gotten mine yet. Uh, but can there be something put in there to these people that they need to get their dog tags taken care of?
I will mention it to Sandy, but Sandy is the one doing the water bills now.
So, are they coming?
I got mine today.
Are they?
I do.
Sorry, are they coming from Worland now, like? Yes, they'll be sent out of Worland, so they will be going through Casper now.
No, they're going through Damsel now.
Okay. Wherever it is, whatever the big purpose is, but yes, because Sandy's the one that's, um, sending them out now.
So, everything's taken seven, up to seven days to get here.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Uh, she, this was her first month doing the water bills, so she had some questions. Um, she's got them all answered now, so next month it will be a lot smoother for her and they probably will get out a lot sooner. She's, um, wanting to get them out within like probably the first, second of every month. It's just she had so many questions with her, being her first time doing it. But I think we've got all the questions cleared and it should go a lot smoother next month, so.
Is there another one to take care of getting these dog tags paid for? Because I know they weren't even hardly paid for last year, there's a lot of them not even taken care of.
Yeah, I have the list in my office, I think maybe, maybe five to seven people I think have paid for them. Is there?
Well, I think what we do is we just put in their water bill that type we're due on January first.
I can probably type it out and then give it to Sandy and she can probably put on her next month's, um.
And then put something on there that there will be a, uh, for all those that are not done by June first.
The paper's over there hanging up, I can't remember, is it fifty dollars? I can't remember, it's over, it's hanging up by the door over there.
But I think we've gotta put some teeth in it to make it work, yeah. You know, and if we've gotta issue citations for, you know, they gotta.
Can we, do you have a list of people who have dogs in town? I have the old files, um, of old that people have, um, but that's really all I have. And I mean, it's Manderson really, it's not hard to tell who, or to know who has dogs, but.
Okay, is all public comments? I didn't get mayor's comments, uh. Yeah, I missed it. We, we, we've got to make sure, uh, on building permits, we've gotta, uh, we gotta have the building permit before we build. And on water and sewer, if you're changing uh, your service in any way, you've gotta get a permit through the town to do that. So, I just, just wanna remind everybody that we do gotta get building permits and we've gotta do, do that, so.
That reminded me about the building permitting thing, did you happen to find that ordinance for the building permit?
I found the old one, I haven't found anything in the new one, yeah. You know, the old one's got all this stuff, the new one don't, yeah. But I noticed we've had building going on, but we haven't got permits yet, so. No, I looked for it, I'll tell you, this, that book's messed up here.
But anyway, there probably will be citations issued, uh, just to make people believe that you gotta follow the rules, so.
As long as we come back after the ordinance. Can't issue a citation unless we have an ordinance.
Then, then every, everything we've got right now, we can't do a thing about Daryl's case with the dogs that's coming to court. We've gotta drop it.
I mean, we have ordinance for the dogs, I'm just saying, that's my big push about the ordinances as they are, we need it.
Well, you know, my, my big concern is, I like following it, we all know what the ordinances are.
There is a thing in the ordinance that says before any fences and walls over thirty inches in height above an established grade are erected along any required yard, the property owner shall first obtain a permit from the town hall or maintenance. That fence and walls along your property line. That doesn't include buildings in your yard.
Well, I guess if anybody needs to build a house, now's time to do it.
I mean, unfortunately, that's, that's the mess that an ordinance goes in and so we can't issue citations on something.
People, I wish people would respect the town more instead of going out and doing what they know is wrong.
Well, they don't know it's wrong because it's not.
They put a, 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 a paper in for a building permit and before it hadn't built, they knew that they had to have one, so they know it's wrong.
Until they see that in the ordinances, which is where the whole town, it's not actually there.
Yeah, I, you know, it's not worth me arguing about it, it's, it's just we may as well let people go do what they want, you know, it's.
My main thing is we can only enforce what is on the books. And if we want to fix it, then we need to.
It is on the one book.
On the book that no one has access to.
Who knows what book is the right book?
And that's the problem.
So.
We're saying the same thing is a problem.
Right, then, then.
We have to get it fixed before we can do anything legally.
Okay, if we're going there and I hate to bring this up, what about picking speeders up? Is our stuff no good?
That's super, that's.
State statute.
That's, that's state.
We have state.
But, but we've gotta have an ordinance.
Not. No, we don't.
So, we have state statutes. And we do have some, I mean, there's a few ordinances out there for like a jar of water to get them.
Well, let's, let's move on if, if people wanna mess the town up, that's their problem.
Well, I mean, it's actually our.
Everybody's problem.
I mean, it is our problem.
Well, it is, I'm trying to keep the town the way it's supposed to be going.
Which is fine, but it is our, our problem as council because we have to get it on the books before we can do anything.
We do, what about the people that's gotta build and permit?
Then, I don't know.
Should we, should we give them their money back? Because we didn't have an ordinance?
Technically, yes.
Okay, well, let's get her coming. Uh, anyway, let's move to executive session.
Can we have a few minutes before we go in there?
We can, we can take five, can it, right? Let's reconvene in executive session.
Yep.
At. Call the meeting back order at eight o'clock. We discussed personnel issues, uh, do we have anything to decide out here?
No.
Do I have motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I was trying to share. I didn't go people wasted your time.
The next meeting is in May eighth. About like.
May eighth? Do you have a contract?
Uh, I can, I can get one.
Please, this is significant.
Oh, yeah, I have it right here.
I'm sorry, we missed it. If you wanna comment, you can, but I can't go on the record.
It's fine, I'll just put it in. This is for next year.